The first item on the agenda today is to elect a chair.
Sure is. We are good to go if y'all want to get started.
Okay, I'm trying to pull up the agenda here. Okay, I guess we, I guess the first thing we do is have a roll call to bring the meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay, Tony Stein is on, temporary acting chair for today.
Jordan Scott's on.
Michael Hall, present.
Amy Rodnick, present.
We also have Development Services Director Carrie Kahler, our city attorney, Megan Santie, and we also have Bryce Cox with Denton Navarro, who I think Carrie will introduce later, or now, if you want to, Carrie.
Sure, so Denton Navarro, who are our attorneys, brought in a planner on staff named Bryce Cox, who's got a ton of experience and is a great resource for me and for y'all. And I asked him just to come to this meeting today and listen in and hear what we're talking about and maybe provide some, some color if needed. We're really glad to have him.
Great, welcome. Let's see, I guess we, public comments, I don't know if we have any, any citizens on the call that want to make any general comments? I don't see any.
No, at this time, other than council liaisons and board members, I don't believe we do.
And then, let's see, consent agenda. Looks like we have, we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was June 2nd. And it looks like maybe we never approved the April 7th minutes as well?
Correct.
So I guess, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at those and if anyone wants to make a motion?
I'm assuming we should probably have two separate motions and seconds for each set of minutes. Is that correct?
That is not required for the consent agenda if they'll both, if, you know, the motion is the same for both. But we can definitely break them up and vote on them separately if that's how you'd like to do it.
I don't really care if there's not a rule saying we can't do it that way. I'll move approval of both sets of minutes then.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. I think we all need to vote on that. This is Tony Stein. I vote in favor of the motion.
I think first we need to ask if there's any discussion. I assume there's not, and then take a vote.
Okay, any discussion of the proposed motion? If not, I guess we can vote. Amy?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Michael?
Michael, you're on mute.
Yes.
And Tony's yes. So I believe that's four and passes unanimously for the approval of both sets of minutes. So that gets us into the regular agenda, and it looks like the first item is discussion and possible action to elect a chair.
Nominate Michael Rhodes.
I know we've discussed this several times and there's not been, you know, any, any volunteers, I don't think. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure where we go from, from there. I wish I could do it. I just don't have the time outside of the meetings to appropriately prepare. I'm fine, you know, kind of running a meeting like this, but I'm not sure that I'm going to have, have the time to research things in advance and bring the educated discussion that Jordan has set the very high bar on in the past.
There definitely does not have to be any action. It would just be really helpful for staff. It's difficult to, you know, develop agendas and, you know, without someone kind of, kind of following through with the, with the items as they're coming through. So we definitely don't have to do this today, but we're going to put it on every agenda, I think, until it's just, it really helps for the commission.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we'll have maybe better attendance when we, I don't know if we have a, I guess it was the summer that we weren't always going to have a meeting. So I guess we have one scheduled for September, right?
We do.
Hopefully we'll have, you know, more than just eking out a quorum, you know, once school starts and people are back from vacations. So, you know, maybe we leave it and force it on Brian Nash or Mike Rhodes at the next meeting. Anybody else have anything to discuss or anybody want to raise, you know, raise their hand to volunteer on this?
Well, my, when I came back on the commission, it was with the explicit understanding no one would ever ask me to chair it again because I chaired it before. And maybe next year I would have more time. You know, I would be willing to chair a couple of meetings, but I, I get where staff are coming from and, you know, that they want somebody. And like you say, I think Jordan set a very high bar for running these meetings. You know, I would have to refresh my recollection again about when we open up the public comment section, you know, in the public meeting and when we close it again and a few things like that. But I certainly know how to run a meeting, I think.
And we'd be happy to help anyone, you know, we kind of have like scripts and things to help kind of with those, those items. So if, you know, we'd be happy to provide as much assistance as, as needed in training.
When are the next two PNC meetings scheduled or do we have them scheduled yet?
The regular meeting day is the first Wednesday, so it looks like that'd be September 1st and October 6th. It currently is looking like those will be in-person meetings. We're working on a hybrid option. But as of September 1st, we will have to go back to full compliance with the Open Meetings Act, which if it's hybrid, there still has to be a quorum of members at City Hall, you know, or wherever the meeting place is. And then there are other technical requirements for having people join virtually. So we are working on that right now. We don't have all the details ironed out, but likely at the September meeting, that might be a quick turnaround for us to have our hybrid system in place so that the chance that meeting could get delayed unless we have something to act on, like a plat or something. But yeah, as of right now, those are the dates, but obviously we'll schedule them with you guys and make sure those all work.
Well, I would be willing to do September 1st and October 6th because I know I'm in town. But I really don't want to permanently be chair. I have a lot of other things going on and I won't be in town always for these meetings when we go back to in-person.
That would be great, Amy. We appreciate that. I'll, I'll go ahead and note that in the minutes and then we'll be in discussion with you before the next meeting and make sure it still works.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, you know, I'm vaccinated. If you all are too, you know, I'll come meet with you. Maybe we can go through, you know, I just need a refresher on opening the public comment portions of the meetings, you know, and I don't think, I don't think it'll be that hard to get brought back up to speed.
Great, that sounds great. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm open if we, if we wind up settling on a rotational thing. I'm open to doing a couple after that.
We need, we need to go out in the community and find a victim. I'm sure we have lots of people who have served on the PNC before in city commissions and maybe somebody would be willing to come in, you know, understanding they would be chair, you know, and that they could be mentored the first few times.
And I believe we do have some outstanding applications for the Planning and Zoning Commission, just no openings at this time, so.
Well, maybe with the applicants, we should explore their willingness to chair it. You know, find some people who are not swamped with other things.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be worth asking. I'm sure, you know, I think there's been a couple of people who have expressed maybe interest in exiting if there were somebody to replace them. So the extent we, we do, and there's an interest in being a leader on it, I think that's probably worth discussion.
I agree, because I did not come on the commission with that intention this time because when I did chair it, it was far more time consuming than when I didn't.
And we may want to talk to the strike forces. They're starting to wind up. There's some people who've become very active through that that may have an interest in being on P. Hesitate to hand the chair over to them because it may then become Strike Force 2.0 type of thing. But it'd be nice to have somebody who was on that committee as part of PNC as we try and work through those recommendations. Just food for thought and probably straying from the agenda items, so I'll wrap it up, so.
Well, I, I think maybe if there's a way to ask if they would be willing to serve as chair and they can just say yes or no, or maybe.
They're good ideas. So yeah, maybe actually, maybe it'd be worth, you know, in, in the interim, asking a couple of those if they may have the time to dedicate towards chairing, you know, and again openness for others that have been on to, to chair a couple of meetings while they get up to speed. But maybe, maybe if somebody got on in the near term, the objective would be getting them up to speed and in a position where maybe they could chair, you know, to start the, the beginning of next year.
Yeah, that makes sense. I kind of periodically reach out to our, you know, outstanding applicants. So I'll, I'll do that. And then kind of as we, I think in the coming months, we usually do a, a call for, you know, seats that are expiring and, and when, you know, they'll be reelected or I guess reappointed come the following year. So we'll do that all in conjunction and hopefully in a couple of months have, have some other people on board who might be willing to chair.
Great. I think that wraps up discussion number four unless anybody has anything else to add. So I'll move on to number five, which is update discussion and possible action on a residential landscaping ordinance.
So at the last meeting in June, we talked about a residential landscaping ordinance and we went through some of those concerns, which included retaining walls, includes dirt in the street. And, and I felt like a lot of the feedback I was getting was maybe, you know, perhaps not permitting process, but how can we tighten up the code to address some of those issues? So I put together a presentation. I'm going to share my screen. And so the issues, silt in the street, retaining walls that don't retain anything. And then since that meeting, a couple of things that have come up are, you know, water lines being broken and city valves being covered up with new landscaping. We'd also discussed at an earlier meeting, fence height. I, I pulled fences out for now and thought we could look at these issues and see if there's some ways to make improvements. So as far as dirt in the street, one possible solution without implementing a permitting process would be to put into place an ordinance that requires silt fencing for all properties doing landscaping where installation of turf is occurring. Or some variation therein, if you all think a, a variation to that would be appropriate. For broken water lines, we do have a requirement that property owners call Texas 811 before digging. But I feel like there's kind of a disconnect. A lot of times when people think of digging, they think like, oh, well, I'm not digging a hole. I'm just digging up my grass or I'm just digging up my flower bed. And as we all know, a lot of our lines, because of how rocky it is, are really shallow under the dirt. So we could tighten up that ordinance to just be to require all property owners to contact 811 before performing landscaping work. Valves, we, we definitely have been running into this the last, with the last few water line issues we've had where we are unable to locate city valves because new landscaping was installed over it. So an ordinance prohibiting homeowners and landscapers from covering up valves. And as we find these, we've got a plan going forward to go in and put a, a little monument pad around them, a little concrete pad around each valve so that they're more identifiable. And that's something that we're going to be working on, you know, going forward. We'll probably start that project when it gets into cooler weather. But just having something so that if one is covered up and we can't find it, we have, we have some sort of teeth to keep that, you know, to work with people and have them not do that. And then retaining walls, which is the big one. I think we definitely need a definition for retaining wall. And based on the feedback of the last meeting, the discussion was, well, you know, we, we have these walls that aren't retaining anything. And that's the conundrum that I've been in with our reviewers is lacking a definition. So I, I pulled together, thanks Bryce for giving me some additional resources. I put together an example definition that you might want to consider, which is for that retaining wall, a wall or terrace combination of walls used to retain or restrain lateral forces of soil over 18 inches and not used to support, provide a foundation for, or provide a wall for building structure. Retaining walls shall not exceed a height of more than six inches. That's a variable number, six inches above the soil grade being retained. So that would allow you to have a little bit of a lip over whatever you're retaining, but not have a scenario that, like we're seeing now, where maybe there's four inches of dirt being retained by a six-foot wall.
Why do we think people have these retaining walls that aren't retaining anything? I, I thought, I've seen some in the front of yards that I just assumed were related to drainage.
Um, it is a loophole to provide fencing that does not meet the front yard fence requirements.
So they are primarily in the front yards, then, I guess, as far as we know?
Yeah, primary, primarily in the front yard. Or in a side yard and then, in a manner that's non-conforming with corner lot fence regulations.
So they're basically being used in front yards as a privacy thing? So, I mean, are they, they're, we have tall ones in front yards?
We have, yeah, we have a few. And it's, or, or we have some where someone's built maybe a, a three or four foot wall and then put a three-foot fence on top of that, which is essentially acting as a six-foot fence. There's not, there's not many, but it's something that keeps coming up and is going to continue to come up.
Yeah, the question was, do we want to have front yard fences? Rollingwood has typically been a non-yard. That was step one. And the community got together probably about 10 years ago to tackle front yard fences from a safety issue after some kids who'd lost balls in the street. Sorry, let me take my, I'll take my video off here because I'm getting a low, low connectivity. So there was a safety issue. They decided on the fencing ordinance that allowed for basically see-through fencing limited to, I think, three feet in height. There's been some pushback on that. Some smart architects got together and figured out that since we don't define retaining walls, they were building walls that were either higher than the three-foot fence line requirement, like max height, or just impermeable, which is what the fence requires. So I think for the majority of all, that's just the history on it. I, I guess, two issues for me. There's the first one I have of, do we still care if there are walls in the front yard? And I, I, my take on it is my personal take is, yeah, the community still likes the open field for Rollingwood without having sort of walls right in the front and on the sides of corner lots. So I'm not sure we need to rehash that conversation. And if we don't need to rehash that conversation, then it comes down to, it's a loophole. Let's close it. We can also go backwards and say, let's close the loophole and then have the bigger conversation about, do we want to change what the definition of a front yard fence is? Carrie brought, last year you brought, can we go up to four feet on a front yard fence? Because it would allow for some flexibility with pool rules about not having to then have a double fence. But if you had a four-foot fence that, that meets the pool requirements, then on some of these side yard, then have these issues with double fencing. And so generally speaking, we can hash all that out, but separately from that, close off a loophole of people using walls that are, quote, retaining walls that are pretty high. So I don't know if that helps.
So right now, they, an architect, just at their discretion, they can design a wall in the front yard of any height, basically, and just say it's being used as a retaining wall?
Literally type it and say, call it retaining wall, and we don't have the code. I mean, we could tell them no and they could sue us. I mean, whether or not that's going to happen, but this point Carrie's not armed with code to point to to say, that's not a retaining wall, that's a wall.
And all, everything in the code related to retaining walls specifically mentions corner lots. It doesn't talk about any other, you know, just regular lots. So if you're on a regular, not corner lot at this point, you can put a, quote, retaining wall right in your front yard at the property line as tall as you want.
I mean, my thoughts on it, guys, and I'm just getting the conversation moving. I'm a, I unfortunately double booked, so I'm going to push things along, Tony, and I hope you don't mind. Our, I like it as a percentage of height. So on a really high wall, I don't mind it going more than six feet above. I'm literally looking out a window at my neighbor who has probably a one-foot wall right back a curb that's been there since the seventies, so not three feet in height. So I'm up for like a percentage. If you, and then I also look at my front yard. I would have a retaining wall that technically was retaining, but went more than six inches above. But it's also an eight-foot wall, I think, out there. And so at one point Sarah, and Sarah, sorry to speak for you, but I recall put across some code language that said, it would be like the retaining wall, the height above, the retaining wall is 80% and there was a 20% above grade based upon the height of the wall. So if you're retaining, I, I was told there'd be no math, but if you're retaining four feet of dirt, that would give you a one foot. Or you could do a third, you could do a 33% above. So that you don't have this sort of six-inch issue, which can be frankly weird, especially when you get to higher retaining walls that are actually retaining a lot of dirt on our sloped lots. You then create a, a fall hazard so that somebody above that wall would fall down into belows. So I think it, Carrie reminded me, anything over a four-foot ball has to have stairs and all that kind of stuff. So making sure that we do it. I'm also good with, so I think the definition makes sense to add, doing some sort of percentage over a fixed six inches above the retaining makes sense to me. And I also think we might want to consider as part of this, limiting this to the front yard. Because I don't really care if people want to put a wall in their backyard. It does not bother me, so.
Well, and that would fall to, if it's, if it's a wall, but it's not a retaining wall, then it's a fence. So you could put, you could put a fence in your backyard that's a wall.
Okay, and so if that's the way we want to do it, I, I get that we're trying to, to keep people from walling off their, their front yards. And, and to, I guess to a certain extent, their side yards, is that? I mean, I know a few houses that have walls on their side yards. Okay.
Yeah, only in so much as it's extending in front of the structure in a, in a manner that isn't consistent with the fence rules.
What about corner lots? Because there are definitely some walls on corner lots that are more than 15 feet back a curb, which I think is our fence requirement on it.
So if you're 15 feet from, from the curb and you're behind the front corner of the foundation, then you're fine. And that's, it's a fence.
It's a, it's a, it's a fence, but it's a solid fence. Okay.
Right.
I think that if we're not, I think what we're trying to do is keep the front yards of places open and inviting. And some of the larger lot houses are struggling with this, I think is one, one area where we've been seeing it struggle. Because our code wasn't really written for multi-lot houses that may face multiple streets. So suddenly everything's becoming a front yard fence. All right, well.
And then do we need to make any distinction for, you know, if they're being, maybe not, if they're not retaining dirt or anything, but are a, a part of the drainage solution? Like, I don't know, I feel like I can picture some, how in fact, maybe one around the corner from you, Jordan, that has some, you know, relatively small walls in the front yard that appear to be sort of catching water and restricting flow as opposed to maybe retaining walls. And I don't know if that, you know, if we write this one way, is it going to create issues with, you know, drainage solutions?
Yeah, solid point.
I, I mean, you could determine a height, right, as it is now, anything under 36 inches is considered landscaping. And most of the front yard drainage retaining wall situations are 36 inches or under, so.
Got it, so we could say.
You could say.
A retaining wall over 36 inches in the front, you know, has these restrictions associated with it.
Does that neuter the front yard fencing though? Because now everybody's got a three-foot wall instead of a fence. And do we care?
That's a good point.
And then if they go in and say, oh yeah, it's a three-foot wall and I'm putting a three-foot permeable fence upon the retaining wall, which I think there's one on Rollingwood that does that, for instance, that y'all probably. Which I think there's one on rolling wood that does that, for instance, that y'all probably have driven by. Um, now you effectively have blocked off. The yard from the street, which is, I think the aesthetic that 10 years ago, the neighborhood was comfortable with maintaining. So my take on it for me is make sure the coded writers to the front of the yard. Uh, have it as a percent, meaning bigger walls can go higher above the ground. The more, the more dirt they're retaining, they get a little bit more. I honestly have no clue. I'm not a landscaper. I don't know if that should. I don't know what aesthetically looks good. I, I don't, but I think the six inches may create problems and having that flexibility, larger retaining walls get larger height, that type of thing. Ha- height above grade for the retained dirt might be better. Um, and then. I think those are my two main concerns. And then the question becomes. A fence on top of retaining wall. Um, and that's where I start to have some issues. I guess where I come down to Tony's, maybe that's a great place where you limit. You can put whatever fence you want on top of your retaining wall. It's limited to three feet in height.
In total, in combination with the retaining wall or?
Yeah, it's a good, which grade is it? Three feet over? I would guess it'd be the downs side of the.
Well, the other thing could we, could we say as it relates to the drainage, could we say you can have, you know, up to 36 inch, you know, wall? Only if it's part of an approved drainage plan. You know, if you just decide you want to build a three foot wall in the front, I think that's, yeah, I think that was the whole point of what was trying to be avoided 10 years ago as it relates to front yard fences. And I think at least what I've seen where, you know, and I don't know if. If there's, you know, roundabout way people would get around this, but. It seems like, you know, the, the ones I've seen in the front and I kind of come back to that one on the corner by you, Jordan, it seems like it was an obvious slope and. Retaining laws you see are higher at one end than the other because they're, because of the slope of the yard and they're clearly there to. To restrict the flow of water. And so to me, you know, you can have a 30, up to a 36 inch. You know, retaining wall if it's. Part of an approved drainage plan.
Part of an approved drainage plan and at the low side of the property. The low side of natural grade, because that's where your drainage is going to be.
Yeah, I guess the only thing then would be, are there scenarios where you might have a greater than 36 inch wall because of drainage?
Then they could get a variance for their drainage plan. If they're, you know, if there was genuine hardship. That they needed a wall that was higher because of drainage, then that would be a scenario for variance.
My understanding is those, those kinds of variances go to city council as opposed to the. Uh, I forget what it's called, as opposed to the variance board.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I think that makes sense. And yeah, I think sort of a. An elective three foot wall in the front yard is. My understanding from the history is exactly what was trying to be avoided with the front yard fence situation. So then if you're doing a. Voluntary three foot wall in the front and you throw a fence on top of that, you know, certainly that doesn't seem like it was within the spirit of what was. Considered. And I, I do think the four foot, I've seen several situations with that four foot versus three foot. Um, as it relates to the pool that you mentioned before, Jordan, I do know at least of at least one situation where. The resident went in front of the board of adjustment and successfully, you know, got a four foot. For yard fence variance for that reason. So I don't know if we want to, you know, that, I guess it sort of worked in that situation. I don't know if we want to leave it. There, or we want to create more flexibility so that people don't have that. Um, you know, have to go to board of adjustments for something like that.
Sure. I think we'd probably take the four foot fence out, um, a, of the immediate, we could probably take this. Piece meal at a time. Right now we got an issue where people are building walls and calling them drainage walls. And we wanted to find what drainage wall is and close the loophole. And we can also look at. Potentially some code to fix the four foot fence. I, I do think. When you put a four foot fence on top of a drainage wall, you're starting to get fenced off again. And that's where it would be. Frustrating, um, that we're starting to wall off from each other here in rolling wood, which is one of the things I. Think is an aesthetic of the community. When I look at Austin, it can be very walled off in, in parts of it. So, and then. Places that I've grown up are definitely walled off, um, or just like compound stuff. So. Cool. Well, uh, Carrie, is that enough for you to go back and propose some code language?
Sure. Yes.
I'm not going to write it. I can also ask you to work with our city attorney to write code language that would A, be applicable to the front yard. B, come up with a percent language that we, we can always fine tune the percent. And in the end, it's not really our judgment, it's the judgment of city council, but, but has a percent limited to the front yard somehow avoids the. All right, I'll have three feet of wall and three feet of fence and, and myself off kind of a thing. And I don't know how to do any of that. So. We're going to punt to you guys who are clearly, uh, more experienced in this than we are.
Okay. Would you like me to come back with language for the other items that I presented on as well?
Uh, can you take us back through those? I guess I can go back to ours. What were they again?
Yeah, I, let me pull it back up here.
We gotta get to driveways. Retaining walls, valves, uh.
Valves and digging.
So, so talk, I'll dig real quick. What happens when I call 811? Cause I, I'm not going to lie. I'm not calling 811 when I go dig out in my front yard. It's just not going to happen. So.
Yeah. So you should. When you call 811, uh, they come out and they mark all the lines on your property and they let us know. And so we go over and mark, uh, our water and wastewater lines and. As most of you are aware, we've got water lines running all over the place. So.
Yeah. I mean, mine's six inches below top of, below dirt if I'm lucky, to be honest.
Yes. So, uh, everyone should call 811 anytime they're going to dig. For anything, because you just don't know. And, um, you know, as, as. We all hate, there's nothing I like less than issuing a boil water notice to folks. But there's also, there's also fiber optic lines and gas lines. So.
Gas lines have by code have to be, what is it? I just went through this. It's like 40 inches to top a pipe by code. So it's like, you're digging through limestone and all that crap. Um. Okay.
Yes, I will say I, I have seen some gas lines that were.
Not.
Not that far down.
So like.
Two feet down.
Walk me through though, like, so we say, we, we get some code that says call 811 and. My kid goes out there and starts digging for treasure in the front yard and. What, what's the ramp? Like, I, I hate writing code that like. Are you going to enforce? Are you going to ticket? I mean, what's the, what's the deal?
Um, I mean, it would be up to our discretion, but we would be able to issue a ticket.
Is that really what you guys want to be doing is run around writing tickets to people's digging?
No, and it's not, but, but the problem is when we have these water line breaks, we had one on timberline a couple of months ago. And we had to shut a third of the city off because a landscaper put a jackhammer through a water line.
We charge the landscaper for, for that kind of, like, can we make it like, by the way, you should, you have to call this. And if you don't. You're responsible for.
Yes. And that would, that would be the purpose of this would be so that landscapers are calling 811. It's not when your kids digging around looking for worms in the front yard. It's when you have somebody coming in to do landscaping. Maybe they're putting some metal edging in. You know, they. They would call 811 and get those lines marked prior to digging up the sod or putting in metal edging that could. Hit one of those shallow lines.
What's everyone else think about this?
Looks like Sarah's.
I think, I think we can, I think we can do things, but I wonder, you know, if. We write language, but nobody's checking it. That's not going to solve the problem.
I, I mean, the, the way that it would get checked would, the, the check would be when someone hit the line because we have to come out and repair.
And could we charge the homeowner and the, uh, landscaper for that repair? Is that, is that legal prosecutor Santee? I love your name on that. That's awesome.
I mean, I know. We can provide a provision for that. Yes. But that assesses that responsibility.
I don't mind laying it off on the landscapers to be honest. And if that fails, then, then onto the homeowners. We can do education as a city. We can try and educate, which is great. Um. But, but it is if, if a landscaper takes out a third of the city water for a day. Um, now, are we allowed to out and shame, uh, the households that are causing these problems prosecutor? I'm teasing, I'm kidding. Uh. Shame and name. Can we make that part of our code? Uh, no, I mean. I, I'm, I'm not for writing code for the sake of code. I think education works better. But if we need a scared straight, strong arm tactic of, hey, you need to do this. And if you don't. Um, I mean, it comes back around to landscape permitting, which is there's, there may be reasons to have a. Low fee permit, which is just the chance to educate a landscaper on. Here are the steps you need to do. Here's a $25 permit. And they're doing that just because when they sign the permit form, it's got all the, you gotta call 811. Here's the links to all the rules, that kind of stuff. I don't know. We may be off topic for all I know.
Sarah, did you have your hand up?
I did. So, um, a couple of things on the retaining wall. To me, it's, we need to consider visibility and drainage. Um, also when we did the, um, the drainage criteria manual. There is a requirement in there that you are not allowed to change the topography of the lot at the property line. Um, without the city engineer, uh, you know, considering that how that would affect drainage and, and only can. Grant a variance if it doesn't affect the drainage. I, I think our previous city engineer was being very liberal with those approvals. But, um, because of retaining wall on the property line, on one side of the property line. You know, the person who puts it in affects the people on the other side of the property line. Um, so we had some restrictions on that too. And, and also consider that a lot of these retaining walls that are being put in are not being put in because they have to be. They're being put in because somebody is buying a lot in rolling wood. That has hills and they want a flat yard. And so people are putting in retaining walls to get their flat, so that their yard is flat and then it impacts. Adjacent yards and, you know. How things look and, and how runoff. Goes both sides of the, of the wall and. Other things like that, that I think also need to be addressed. And the no change in topography of the property line probably helps address the. Problem of city valves being covered up because those are typically very close to the curb. And if you're not allowed to change. You know, there, it's a, it's a allowable slope from the property line, but if there's limitations on people not putting the retaining wall right up there at the property line, then. You, you'd not changing, you're not covering up the city valves.
As far as the valves go, mostly what's happening is people are coming in and dumping a couple of truckloads of river rock. And planting some cactus over it. And then we, we get in there and can't. You know, our, our metal detectors don't want to work over, you know, a foot. Deep of, of river rock. So it's a, it's a little, the, the valve situation. I feel like stands alone. I think you bring really great points about every, everything else. Um. I, I have not had a, a situation where I had a retaining wall valve problem. Um, but.
Okay.
Just in the issue moving along, I'm happy to look at code if you want to write it up, Carrie. Uh, you've heard my, I don't like writing code for the sake of code. If it's necessary and worthwhile, we can recommend it to council. Um. I, I think council's also of the same mind that they don't, we have a lot of code and we're already struggling to enforce the code we have. So. Happy to look at it. Also happy to consider it as part of a, a larger. Given that our landscaping projects are bigger than the 1987 code probably thought about that I'm open to on P and Z. This is me personally, not as chair. I'm open to having a discussion of a simple. Permit. And I'm talking more of a chance to educate low fee. On my side, it's education, low fees to get your permit. Probably less than what Sarah might, might. Has expressed in the past that she would want. Um. I'm, I'm up for a chance to educate landscapers and homeowners as to the correct steps and code that they need to be following. But less looking to have a construction type permit with inspections going on than, uh, we've had in the past. Or that we don't, that we don't currently have. I've seen it.
I agree, I agree with that. I'd be open to looking at something in that, in that vein. Um. I'm not sure that there's. Well, at least in my view, I'm not sure there's a lot of momentum for, yeah, creating a whole. You know, separate type building, building ordinance that governs landscaping, but I think if. Yeah. If there's some definable triggers of if you're doing this, this, or this. You know, as it relates to landscaping, you're required to, you know. Or, you know, reiterate, you're required to call 811 and, and do whatever other steps, you know, we need them to do to try to avoid things like that happening.
I mean, don't quote me, but I think we got a requirement to get a permit to change your water heater. And I don't know if anybody does that. So like, I just don't want to create stuff for the sake of doing it. It's got to have a reason and a.
And that, that's why I'm a little was reluctant to have a permitting process for this. I would rather have the code in place. And do an education, you know, do some, do some community blasts and some education on, on landscaping and, and what needs to be done. I, I will do whatever you all want. I just. I can foresee a, a scenario of somebody starting some yard work and just not pulling a permit and doing it on the weekend. So if we had the code tightened up in places. And just said, hey, these are the things you have to do to do that yard work. And then if you want to do that on a Saturday. And you've called 811. Have at it.
But if, but if someone is willing to, to go to those lengths to avoid a permit, then they're probably not calling 811. Either, right?
Tony, are you open to a punitive where, hey, you don't call 811, then we may be charging you for all the pain in the ass of bringing everybody in on a Saturday to fix our water system when you hit it? I mean.
Yeah. I mean, it's tricky as a homeowner, as a contractor, as a both, you know, a lot of times I think, you know, right or wrong, obviously homeowner should be educated and they should. Look into what they're supposed to do. But I think a lot of times people kind of blindly trust their contractors and, and landscapers are probably the, the ones we at least want them. Blindly trusting would be my guess. Um. So I don't know. I'm open to it, but it'd be probably a little bit of a slippery slope. Um. You know, but, but, you know, I think at least if, if you put something in place. You're obviously going to have probably limited participation in whatever that requirement is initially. But over time, you know, if we, if we put something in there and says, you've got to. Call 811, here, here's the steps you need to take when you're doing whatever kind of landscaping work. Then, you know, the next time somebody doesn't and. You know, bust a pipe, you know, I think there should be a, you know, we get all the blast when there's a boil water notice, right? If we got one of those that said. We have a boil water notice. And then there's a follow-up that says, this is what caused the boil water notice is, and it doesn't have to be naming names, but it can be a resident. Um, you know, did not call 811, their, their landscape. Contractor, you know, busted the pipe and that's. contractor, you know, busted the pipe. And that's why we had that, you know, this is another reminder that we have this requirement and code section, whatever, that you got to call 811 before you do this, this and this. I think it would have to be something that happens over time and initially you probably send out a notice with the water bills and you just kind of figure out a plan for however we normally educate people of new changes. And and understand that it's going to be something that happens over the course of time.
Yeah, Tony, you remind me of some some other government programs where whereby it's almost like a positive incentive. If you call 811 and something happens, then you are indemnified. And I don't know if that's the situation now in our code. But that can be, I've seen it in other things like in in aviation. If you make a mistake as a pilot and you're worried about losing your license, you self-report and that then they no longer are able to remove your license for that issue. So it could be that where it's where rather than punished for mistake, it's hey, if you do this, this protects you as the homeowner and your contractor from anything but gross negligence type of thing. I mean, if they spray paint a line and you jackhammer it. That's a problem, but i- if you take, you know. I don't I don't know all the legal terms for it, but i- if you take best efforts to, you know, not break something and you make the phone call. Then the city's not going to come after you. It's just another way of looking at it. Hey, Michael, you're talking too much, bud. Can you keep it down?
I know, I'll try. I'm just learning.
What do you think?
Soaking it up.
Amy, you got any thoughts?
I I want to thank staff for that presentation because it certainly made it much more clear to me what we were talking about, but I, you know, I'm generally in agreement with what I've heard.
Yeah, Carrie, maybe maybe it seems like the best course of action on on this issue is. You know. I think it sounds like we lean towards more of a lighter hand approach and you know, you know, from past experience, what might work or what might help educate people over time, I think. I think you propose and and you seem maybe a little bit more hesitant on the idea of of permitting. So maybe you propose some language that you know, of maybe a code addition that would you know, have the requirement for you know, calling 811 or or whatever else might be helpful.
And I and I I'll add to that. I mean, we do have site development permits and and other permits. I I'm not entirely opposed to it. I'm just if there's a way to tighten up some of the code so that to make it easier for residents to both get the work done that they want to get done and do it in a manner that's safe and protects our infrastructure, then that that's what I would what I'm for. Sarah, did you have something to add?
Sorry, yeah, I'm mute. And yeah, the the concerns that I have with the landscaping are. You know, it's one thing if somebody's just, you know, planting flowers versus terracing their whole lot. And and the difference is how it affects the drainage and how it affects the neighbors. And so I think we need to make sure that we are balancing not adding a lot of code that is necessary unnecessary or won't be enforced with making sure that we are protecting the neighbors of whoever is doing the work. That we're addressing drainage concerns, that we're also educating people on the need for s- silk fences and and the digging. So that that we are. I mean, that was one of the problems that Carrie said she had when we keep having landscape projects that have silk washing down the street when it rains. Well, they don't have a silk fence because they don't have a permit because they never have to come in and Carrie never gets to talk to them. And so that's the kind of thing that I was concerned that we need to have a way to address. And when Carrie doesn't have code to enforce to, she can't enforce. Right? So it it's not necessarily the permit process as much as it is having something on the books that says, you know. You you can't do this, or when you're doing X, you have to do Y beforehand so that that there's a way to, you know, make somebody clean up if they their whole sand pile washes down the street in rain or you know, put up a silk fence to make sure that doesn't happen in the first place.
All right, so I will work on some some code language and I will bring it back to you. I'll get give you some very specific language that you can look at and, you know, propose any changes to it and we will look at this again.
I I seem to remember there's some sort of a threshold of maybe 250 square feet or something along those lines of if you're impacting impervious coverage by that much, then you've got to do. Maybe it's a drainage study or an engineering. Does that relate to only in conjunction with a building permit or a pool permit, I guess, as opposed to?
It's it's part of the DCM. So if you're adding 250 square feet or greater of impervious cover. You have to have civil plans and have them reviewed. So so we do have some checks for not so much for terracing. But but for for increased impervious cover. And then as far as terracing goes, if you're changing the grade. That it doesn't meet the ratio included in the DCM. Then then you would be in violation. So you'd certainly have to submit plans for us to look at. So we do have some tangential rules that apply to that, but.
And I guess the question is whether they're being followed or not, which I guess is probably hard to hard to say. Is there any level of policing happening where if there's a major you know, landscape project that's obviously happening is creating runoff issues or or whatnot? Is there anybody checking the?
I have not. I have not gotten any complaints to regarding terracing. Typically, that building plans and and we review it with the plans. So.
Or the 250 square foot, there's not been issues coming up with that after the fact?
No. I think people here are pretty well educated in the DCM, so. They know to at least call me and discuss it when they're wanting to put in a patio or whatever it is.
Yeah, I guess I I guess I knew it and I didn't go researching it to come across it fast. And I'll have you know, Jordan, I also pulled a permit for my water heater, too.
He did.
Okay, so I think that's, you know, unless anybody has anything else to add. I think we've discussed number five quite a bit and have a plan for Carrie to continue some work on that. People ready to move on to the next gym item or anybody else have anything else to add?
Tony, I'm running short on time.
I am too. Um, so let's move on to number six.
I'll go through really quick. I've I've got another presentation on number six. You all asked me to come back with a list of materials regarding driveways and then we were talking about widths and curb cuts. So I came back with the list of materials. Just generally, you've got gravel, concrete, pavers, shell, decomposed granite, asphalt, pervious concrete. I have, I went through a pros and cons list of those. Right now, what our code says is the driveway has to be permanently hard topped. It doesn't expand upon that. Then we also, we talked about the number of driveways and widths and how wide an apron could be. So I pulled the driveway code. And then broke it down, put some little graphics in here. So your apron has to be at least four feet from the street. You've got a a radius of five feet. You have to have expansion joints to accommodate any water lines that are there. It's got a positive drainage to the street. And then it cannot be closer than five feet from the property line. And the center lines for circular driveways can be not closer than 35 feet. So items for consideration. This is y'all considering where whether you care about the following. Maximum number of curb cuts, maximum total width of a single cut. That was something we discussed at the June meeting was okay. Perhaps we don't care how many that there are, but maybe we don't want a single curb cut that's 40 feet wide for residential. So some questions, should materials be uniform? What constitutes permanently hard topped? Should it be restricted to concrete and asphalt or should it be less restrictive? You've got that four feet, that four foot apron. So do you care if somebody has so, you know, shell, decomposed granite, gravel, if it's four feet back and there's some kind of barrier that prevents it from coming into the street? Do you care? Do you not care? And then for widths, the average width of a vehicle is six feet wide. And you would need two feet per side for access. So the width of a two vehicle driveway would need to be at least 20 feet for the vehicles to park side by side with access. And the minimum width of residential lots is a hundred foot frontage. With corner lots having a minimum frontage of 115 feet. So if you've got a a lot with a circular driveway. You would have at least 20 feet of that frontage taken up with driveway space. If it was a cir- you know, if it was a driveway wide enough to accommodate two vehicles, it's going to be you know, roughly 40 feet of that 100 foot minimum frontage that would be paved.
Yeah, I think you wouldn't probably want two curb cuts that are kind of double car kind of full driveway, you know, curb cuts. Like to the to the extent you allow a second curb cut besides the normal two car driveway. It should be a single car curb cut would be my opinion.
Think if I recall, the idea was that we might allow 25 feet of total curb cuts and that would limit somebody from doing that sort of thing if they wanted a double wide straight in type thing, they could have that. If they wanted two curb cuts, it might give them 20 feet might be a little too tight in my thought, but at some point you just limit the width of the curb cuts in total. And I mean, if they want three 10 footers, fine, whatever, like it was sort of, I I was up for two curb cuts. That's what you get. It didn't sound like we had appetite. Looking at, it's not really there in the notes, but from my recollection. There wasn't an appetite of the committee to limit the total number of curb cuts, but there was more of an appetite to lift the linear square foot. Do I have that right, Tony and others?
I don't really remember and I've missed a couple of meetings recently. I don't really remember discussing total linear feet, but it may have been one that I wasn't at, but I think that's kind of a good concept.
I think correctly, Jordan, that that there was more of an appetite for a a total total maximum width.
Yeah, that may have been a meeting I wasn't at, but as an example, you know, I'm I'm on Rollingwood Drive and when we bought the house, we added a circle drive and you know, met whatever the, you know, the the distance between the two curb cuts has to be and whatever those rules were. But I think I would probably still meet the linear footage because my regular two car driveway does not have a full two car curb cut. So, you know, when I back out of one side of the driveway, I've got to curve around the tree in my situation, which is fine. So I think if you had you know, if you wanted to have a total linear footage, to your point, Jordan, I think then somebody, even if they didn't have a tree to work around like I do, you know, would have to you know, their their two car driveway would need to have a smaller curb cut. If they want to have a third, if they want to have a second curb cut.
Well, we could write some code that limits it to a certain amount, like 30 feet, 25, I think 20 is personally, I think 20 is too little. It's just real tight at that point. Probably say you get a total of 30 feet of curb cut. That's that's 30%. And I don't as long as it's safe, I don't have a problem with it cutting across corners. My issue is distance to the corner like you know, that kind of thing. So yeah, I don't, I don't know. I
Yeah, the only real scenario I see justification and somebody reasonable people could argue with me whether justified or not and did on one of our meetings, but the only situation I see where, you know, more than two curb cuts is warranted is you know, a circle drive in the front on a corner lot where you've got a, you know, your normal driveway on the side, which is exactly what we approved on Rollingwood Drive, you know, a little down from me. You know, beyond that specific situation, I don't really see justification for three curb cuts. So maybe we could have a limitation where, you know, you're you have two curb cuts on an interior lot. You know, you can have three on a corner lot. To the extent one is a circle, you know, with a maximum of two on, you know, any one street. And you can have total linear footage that could apply, you know, it could be different for interior lot versus corner or not.
You could certainly go with something like 25 feet on an interior lot with a limit of two curb cuts and 30 or 35 feet on a corner lot with a limit of three curb three curb cuts. And that would give you.
And no more than two on one, like I wouldn't want. Because you have a corner lot, I'm not sure anybody would do it, but have, you know, the one down the street from me where they got three curb cuts on Rollingwood Drive. They have two on Rollingwood Drive and one around the corner.
And that's if if this is something, if if y'all are happy with the way things are going and you don't think that this needs to be regulated, maybe we don't need to do anything. It's just something that has come up and that that we've discussed. So that's why I was bringing it back to you. So if you're fine with the way that been reviewing it, then.
My concern right now is that the code at that last one, you could have put a circle driveway on each side of your corner lot and that sort of became frustrating to me. There's just a lot of driveways. I think Michael Rhodes, I don't want to speak for him, but as I recall, also had There's just a lot of driveways. I think Michael Rhodes, I don't want to speak for him, but as I recall, also had some heartburn with the idea of. No, no. Way a limiting number of driveways, probably based on some stuff that he's been seen or been asked to do in the city of Austin kind of a thing, um, as a contract. So I'll let him kind of talk about that, but there is some appetite for limitations, I think. Sort of like the fence where there's no even height limit on it. It's just structural. You can build a hundred-foot tall fence if you want to right now because there's no limit. Like having some sort of limit, even if it was like. Way out of the max, like, all right, you're gonna have fifty feet, but some sort of limit would make sense to me. So we just don't. Go nuts, um, with these sorts of things, um. I mean, Carrie, as I look at it, you'd say where the center line has to be, but you don't say where the edges have to be. So if someone want to put. Basically a half circle with a little dot of grass in the middle of it. You could have an entire, you know, front yard be cement because we don't have impervious coverage, which.
Well, you would still have to go for a drainage review.
Yeah, you gotta drain it, but if you're willing to drain it, then you can have all the cement you want and. I've seen that in other cities where they, you know, and even in Austin in the old days, I look at it on multifamily stuff where it's just paved. Um, so. Anywho, I'm I'm up to come back to some specific language that would limit the linear footage and put that in front. Uh, my my take is somewhere in the thirty-foot, which would allow. Either a cou- a very wide, single one or. And I'm also open, as Tony suggested, to different limits for corner and, uh, interior lots. So if you want to come up with some suggestive language and put it in front of us, happy to look at it. Uh, I am, I do have an appetite to put some sort of limit on it. Given that it seems like you you can get away with a lot these days. With our.
What about materials?
I'm a cement and asphalt guy and that the apron has to be cement. That's kind of my take.
Apron, the apron has to be cement period. That's already in the code. We've got apron requirements.
I will say I'm looking at from a drainage standpoint in Austin, there's new materials out there that allow you to have a structurally sound. Green driveway, um. Where you you put planters in these hexagonal structures that can carry the weight of a normal automobile and. So I'm open to it, especially because it helps from a drainage perspective and previous coverage and. Um, I know we don't have that, but it could be helpful. And if somebody wanted to do it. Fantastic. If they just want a curb cut to a a grassy part of their side street where they might pull their boat in behind their yard. I don't know why we would force them to asphalt the whole thing to put the boat in the backyard, um, kind of a deal. I could totally see that being fine with a curb, the boat up and off the street. So. I don't know, as long as the apron is cement, I'm I'm pretty much good at that point. The the main issue is that it can't be loose, if that makes sense. Uh, I've seen enough gravel out in the streets from when people are building and the driveway is gone, they just have the apron, it gets kicked into the street. Causes problems, causes people walking and riding their bikes and all that, so. I'm I'm anti-loose structure, but as long as the structure is held. Uh, I'm good. I don't know if that helps with yours and y'all, I gotta sign off unfortunately and I don't want to break quorum, so. If everybody else wants to give their two cents.
Uh, I I don't have a strong opinion about materials. I mean, I I would say when you say concrete and. Asphalt, I mean, I'm, I know there's a driveway on a new house a few doors down from me that has pavers, which I know is really expensive, but. Uh, I mean, paver, do pavers qualify as asphalt or cement? You know, brick pavers, I guess.
No. Permanently hard topped, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like the permanently hard topped language to give flexibility for a situation like that. And I think that would probably also give flexibility for like that pervious concrete too, right? That's hard. I mean, I think that would be hard topped. I don't know about, I don't know about the your your green driveway scenario, Jordan, with the. Pavers of grass growing through it. I don't know if that works or not, but I agree with you in general. I would. Think with the drainage issues that we have in the city, you know, anybody willing to spend the money to create a. A workable driveway that doesn't, you know, wash out into the street that adds impervious coverage. I think that should be welcome.
I mean, are you allowed to give sole and exclusive purview to our building official to determine the top of the type of driveway? Like you can look at it. If you agree, great. If not, no.
Megan.
So I'm 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 gonna cut in here and while she's getting off. That's a lot of pressure to put on Carrie. And she doesn't have anything to back her up if somebody gets. Difficult about that. That that's making, that's making Carrie not have something to fall back on.
I I mean, we could, we could leave the hard top. What would happen now, Carrie, with the hard top thing, where somebody came in and said, hey, I've got this great. Idea that people are doing now, I got these pavers and and it's going to be grass growing through, but it totally supports the way to the car and. Freeze up impervious coverage and I want to do this. What would, I mean, would it just be no or? You know, is there an avenue where it could come in front of us or somebody else?
Yeah, I mean, I think if I could just get some, you know, some feedback from y'all and from council, like y'all are fine with that. Then I can just start reviewing that way and we can just leave the code the way it is, is permanently hard topped and I can have the. Leeway to include those materials and not include. You know, gravel or shell or. Whatever, decomposed granite.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what people don't want and.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm kind of fine with it. I think it's more of a question as as opposed to materials. I think it's more of a. A curb cut question and, you know, of course, we have a quorum here, but I know. Uh, you know, Jordan, your point, Mike, and even, um, Jamil, I think we're. You know, had a different view of me, you know, for me, I probably lean more towards. You know, within reason, more curb cuts. I like getting cars off the street. I know Jamil. You know, kind of had the opposite view and maybe Mike was somewhere in between, so I wish we had more people to discuss that before.
Agreed.
Taking action, um. But I think, I think what would be helpful, Carrie, I think you mentioned that you had put something together on this point. I think it would be helpful to. You know, I know it's obviously posted in in the agenda and everything probably, but I think it'd be helpful just to maybe send a a distinct email out to our group and say. This was the 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 stuff I put together regarding driveways and curb cuts, you know, please review and. You know, we can let us know if you want to discuss in the future. I know for me, if I get an email with a single attachment, that's a specific thing to review. It makes it a little easier.
Sure.
And then maybe Mike and Jamil will see it too and either, you know, email their thoughts or we can talk about it again.
Okay.
Works for me.
Can I throw something out there real quick too, just for you all to be thinking about? Um, one of the things that Jamil commented about last time that he was concerned with was. Um, not just the number of curb cuts, but the the volume of paving. Um, and that some of the. Recent homes had, you know. Vast part of the front yard was paved, um, you know, circular lot with. With parking pads on each side and all that, um. One thing that we could also consider is putting a limit. Um, on the total impervious cover in the front yard for. Um, driveways and sidewalks and that sort of thing. So that would, that would, um. Allow for a driveway, a circular drive. Um, but still maintain some open. Non-paved area and then and then let the, let the homeowner decide how to, how to allocate that.
Yeah, I think that's worth discussing and I think that might be something that would, yeah, push maybe a little bit more towards some of these greener, you know, materials. That can be used. So maybe that's something to mention too in that in the presentation that you have, Carrie is, you know, kind of just a question mark. Do we want to talk about? You know, limitations on impervious coverage in the front yard as it relates to driveway specifically.
I would, uh. I'm a little hesitant. I mean, I haven't had the conversation, but I'm not in favor of backdooring into impervious coverage. If we want to have a. Discussion about impervious coverage as a community, I'm wide open to that, but for front yard impervious, all that kind of stuff. I'm not really excited about that, um. I think there are other limits that will keep the driveways from getting too crazy. And if somebody's going to come in and do this, it's part of. They have to have the drainage for it is where we're at right now, um. So I'm not, I mean, just measuring what's a front yard, measuring it on, on a corner lot. Like. I I see a lot unintended consequences of trying to place a front yard impervious coverage restriction.
Yeah, I I mean, we're at the end of the meeting. I think she was raising it to think about. I mean, I that's, I'm open to thinking about it. I don't have any. Thoughts formulated in one direction or another.
I'm wide open to having, I mean, I know it's sometimes the third rail of, uh. Rollingwood is to talk impervious coverage, but I think it's past time for the. I thought the strike force would be talking about that. Instead, it's been. All about B caves, uh, which is a little bit frustrating, but is what it is, so.
Jordan, council voted, not me, council voted not to allow them to talk about impervious cover limits.
Oh, that's right. I forgot. Thanks for the reminder, so.
Which is totally nonsensical, but there we are.
Yeah. I, uh. Uh, yeah, I appreciate the reminder, Sarah, so. I I'm, I have to think about it. We can chat about it. I don't, I think. Doing impervious coverage piecemeal is is not the way to go about doing it, so.
Well, frankly, if that's the case, then whatever time we spend talking about it and formulating an idea and sending the council sounds. Like it may be DOA, but I mean, we can, we can certainly think about it.
There's an election in November. So who knows?
I nominate Amy to run. She used to be mayor. We didn't have any agreement about asking you to run for mayor, Amy. That wasn't in. Hey, y'all.
I I think Sarah would make an excellent mayor.
Oh, yeah. No, not while I'm working.
You know. I'm I'm a, I'm turning into Cinderella and my my carriage is turning into a pumpkin. I've pushed off my, uh.
Okay, and we, yeah, we already, number seven is discussion of scheduling. We already kind of discussed that at the outset. And, you know, I think actually y'all are working on how these meetings are going to be held and we know. September first is the next date and y'all are going to let us know whether that can happen in person or hybrid or. Or whatever.
Yep, we'll be.
I think, uh. That that gets us through the agenda in my view, so I don't know if anybody want to move to conclude.
I'll move, we adjourn.
Second. Let Michael second it. Get him on the, get him on the deal.
I second it, second the motion.
Do we have to take a full vote on that? Or I guess we do, right? Uh, Jordan, in favor of ending the meeting?
I.
I think we can all just raise our hands.
Okay, I. Thank you, city staff. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all for those PowerPoint presentations. Those were very helpful.
Very. I think it would be great. I think it would be really great to circulate those just via email attachments for people that weren't on the call. I think it's. Odds are greater that they'll see them that way.
No, I I hope we'll keep doing that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.